Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining this meeting this evening. I'll go ahead and get started. As the chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members in person, if you're thinking about the agenda, are present and appearing. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond if you can. Was it Phil Wada?
Yes.
Mary Brenner?
Yes.
Lori Griffiths?
Yeah.
Mark Holley?
Yes.
And Steph, when I call your name, please respond if you can. Colin and Doug?
Yes.
Ryan House?
Yes.
Chuck Kerrigan?
Yes.
Wayne White?
Yep.
And well. Oh. Oh, sorry. I would choose yes. Oh, all right. Okay, sorry, okay. Um, this opening of this school committee being conducted as a hybrid, as allowed by chapter two of the Act for纸片 paper, signed into law by Governor Hill on March twenty ninth, we agree. This act continues to exempt certain provisions under the law regarding remote access until March thirty first, twenty twenty five. This committee is beginning to be a Zoom and person as posted on the restricts website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, reportedly be aware that other people should be able to see and take your screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast will be captured by the recording, which is automatically to be provided. If you're planning to record or broadcast this meeting, please use your rating computer. Now to notify the chair at five five law. Meeting materials, along with the agenda, those of tonight's meeting materials are available on Maynard's website, with title twenty three, twenty twenty four agendas. Under the tabs will be, the public is encouraged to follow along, who's supposed to agenda and documents unless the chair knows otherwise. Uh, public comments, agenda item is devoted time for the school committee to hear from the public. As such, it's strict, uh, instructor comments towards a muted direction reported of public to another bi-directional conversation. Here are the general rules for any form of public commentary. Any person wishing to speak and make a comment during the virtual meeting, they do so by signing up in advance, up into the public comment agenda item. At the link provided on the agenda, please have your zoom match. Your, uh, so we can be able to unmute you to speak. All public comments are limited to three minutes to ensure that everyone wishes to comment has an opportunity to be heard. No person may comment more than once without permission of the chair. Um, as time allows, the chair can consider allowing a person to comment a second time, especially if it's related to the topic that has not yet been brought up. Email comments in advance are possible, up into the public comment agenda item. To comments for SCV at Maynard dot K twelve dot M A W S. You must state the subject line, public comment, and include your first and last thing you've been taught to, uh, to ensure your comment can be read. Comments run by the chair will only be read for three minutes. If the submitted comments are longer, they'll be cut off at the three-minute mark. To ensure all comments are able to be read in your entirety, it is suggested that you keep them to approximately three hundred and fifty minutes. I'm sorry. Words. I said, I said, I was like, okay. Um, however, submitted comments longer than three hundred and fifty words will be included in the public record in their entire. Anyone can submit public comments. Um, for the public record after the public comment agenda item is passed by providing no copy to. Comments for SCV at Maynard dot K twelve dot M A W S, companies will be getting. Specifying, uh, specifically stating their desire to have additional comments. And before we go onto the agenda item, we just have a couple of round, so we'll introduce each speaker of the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will proceed, uh, with each member asking if they have any questions, comments, or motions. And please hold on speaking until your name is called and religion to the gate of members. Be respectful, and tonight, actually, each vote will be taken, um. Will now be need to take for roll call because we're all the same person. All right, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order at. Seven oh five, I don't think you do that at roll call because we're all on the right urgent business, urgent business. Hey, super student representative report.
Hi. Uh, sorry about my camera, I'm just at the soccer senior night, so.
Well, wow.
Yeah. Can you guys hear me?
I can.
Okay. Um, firstly, we have the highlights, so this week we had the choose MHS presentation at Fowler, which was successful. Some of our MHS students did a great job highlighting the great things that Maynard has to offer the eighth grade students. We also had our Spanish, Spanish exchange students come and visit for a week, which went well. Um, as far as I've heard, everybody is enjoying their time and they've been on some trips this week. Alice training for students in the first Alice show went relatively well. It was very stress-free and we all had discussions with our classes afterwards. As well as last week, progress reports came out. Um, some of our concerns this week were the alumni field. Many of the soccer families were concerned that the field was ruined by the football game versus Hudson. Mr. Maria moved the boys soccer game on Tuesday and the field work was done on Wednesday to prepare for the rest of the season. And for our look ahead, we have the fall sports senior nights, including tonight's. Um, MHS open house for middle school families, October twelfth. This long weekend and then the entire faculty is being trained tomorrow for mental health first aid. Um, it will help to better equipped and support students' mental, mental health, and that's all we have this week.
Give your zoom.
Thank you, Rachel.
Oh, okay.
Rachel, can you mute yourself? I wonder if we're getting feedback from you.
Sorry, what'd you? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because I, when I was speaking earlier, it didn't, it wasn't.
We're getting feedback.
Okay, sorry, I'll just some technical questions here, uh, so I'll go ahead through the school committee, anyone have any comments, Mary, questions?
Nope, just so grateful every time.
Uh, I'll talk loud, um, so grateful every time we can do, um, a choose Maynard, um, event, so, um.
I'm just very grateful for every time we can do a choose Maynard event, especially early in the year when people are starting to think about different options, so, um, thankful for doing that. So, and thank you, Rachel.
Uh, just thank you, Rachel, for taking time when you're busy tonight, uh. And, uh, along the same lines as Mary, can we share that open house, uh, outside of school? You know, have a lot to dissect or account.
I know it was posted on social media, I've got it there too. Yeah, so, and I think I said shared, but.
But like if there's email for people to shop.
Oh, so mails for people who have gone to other schools, I don't know, that would be a question for.
Maybe have, we would have to search for the numbers, we wouldn't be a big, fast occurrence, but.
Like, are you meaning like people who bought to the Emsa or Aspen or some of the church shows or?
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay. Elizabeth?
I know, just thank you, Rachel, very much, and thank you again.
Well, I guess the first question is, um, what is the score? I had to leave early. Oh, yeah, it's on that, yeah, okay, so nothing to do. All right, um, and I, I don't have anything else, but thank you very much.
Um, thank you, Rachel, for your, your comments and your feedback, and I, just as our student representative. I, I do want to apologize for any first students had, uh, regarding the decision about the fields. I know that, I know that a lot of actions taken, October to support your house to speak more about that, but I just felt a mention as well. Since it was a part of your reporting out, so thank you for the feedback, and we will always try to better. Uh, any other? Okay, all right, so thank you, you're more than welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, take care. All right, superintendent house.
Okay, great, come on, pull that up for us. There's the, hi Bill, you're not on yet, you're close.
Okay. Got all excited.
I guess it's enough of a dick.
Thank you, you know what, Bill, okay. Hello, everybody, we actually have some cameras here, which is nice, usually is good for ourselves, so we're glad to see live, it's super exciting. Yeah, attention yourself, it's a good thing, so some updates that we have. Uh, back to school nights happened in all three buildings by this point, they were very successful in all three buildings. Uh, we had our data deck, we want information presented at each building and our director of curriculums there to share that. The information is often scores, it's on our family, it's on the website, to collect any questions and whatnot related to that information. Report, report some older from case, uh, next, next meeting will have a first report from. Aspen Valley, so you see those orderly, if you will, um, just updates on what's happening in Spitt Flavas. A very generous Maynard family donated a new toy costume, imagine like. And I'm sweating by now sitting here, you can imagine being in one of those costumes and running around. I think it's probably a mistake to put it on once first. Uh, but we are very grateful, we sent a, a letter of appreciation to that family. And these are not, very often, people like to move me. Anyway, we do thank them very much. And well, it's super excited. Then I know the student also mentioned, uh, choose Maynard, I, and I didn't mention it, but that's great, that this means it was that successful, it was really. Well organized, well, in very eight grade A team in this building, and it was much more about kids talking to kids. Than it was administration saying how great we are. On the Dr. Rob, and seated, but the kids did a fabulous job, really sharing, they came up and spoke to that by, I think, let it. And you think that, that you named the topic, they talked about it, and I think the eight way to work set it together directly from the students themselves, but cheers to, uh, Maynard. Um, additional things that sort of have to come up since I wrote this a days ago, MCAS will also be made me a book tomorrow. Which nine, so the free PD and sign up for it. Um, a handful of schools signed up for it, it was incredibly low received, so we do surveys. We find out in staff, officiate, as appropriate, it was a useful, or they didn't supply that, etc. And the results were off the term, possibly for that. Only we never did that, but it was great that we were able to, once, let's begin of that. Uh, management health first aid is coming tomorrow, and they will train a hundred and seventy staff members. And sixty of our parents did the same exact thing with that spring, and they gave it great, well, so it should help the people. What's up? And but, Mr. Karen, can't start making, it's only valuable to me. Why you mean?
No, I don't, I don't, just so we know too bad, as I personally, that staff, um, about it, and.
And modern PD is not relevant, is not something to see, this is like, I suppose you want to go south, you didn't wish that, but. Do you want to think about what this? If you want to say anything about it, it was, I'm sorry, when, when I, natural relations, yes, um. But just, uh. It's, the title might imply that like staff is being trained to be like, that's really not it at all, it's a really practical. Um, training, it's, uh, that's sponsored by the state, it's being funded. Um, and it's to help staff members identify, um. When a student might be struggling in ways that aren't as obvious, and when to engage in conversations, or what type, so the conversations, and when to refer to. Other staff, like counseling staff, um, and how to keep lines of communication open. Um, and the goal is to, um, not only have a trusted adult, but have that trusted adult really listening to certain cues that, uh. Might tip off that a student is in need of. Um, so, I know that, um, did our surveys of students last year, um. The one, we had a couple real. Data points pop, and the students themselves were indicating, uh, mental health stress, basically, uh, so. Uh, staff members in their survey indicated students are under an unusual degree of mental health stress. And is obviously all sorts of reports from around the country, so, uh, given that we were seeing the same sort of data, um, in Maynard, we. I started looking into, is there any sort of training we could do, yeah, I would say to locate this training. And again, it's state-reinvented, the staff members who engage in the training, two hours of teamwork and then six hours of training. They have to get a state-issued certificate at the. Athletic update, I just wanted to highlight several of the upcoming events, and I know tonight is boys soccer, uh, senior night, so. But this, um. And I imagine some of you, some of you would be at, or on the team, again, as possible, senior night, football, that would be, be a cross-country. We were actually there earlier, it was not, it was hot. So bad, we just had a fun today, the weather, great job. Um, field hockey is upcoming on the sixteenth, and girls soccer on the B team, so if you have a chance. Go a little while home, obviously, they're senior nights, so they're here, so if you can make any of, even for a little while, they, the kids do, can, they're a lot. So, so let's just talk about it. So, we did play last Friday, um, and I know I responded to a lot of, you know, several emails and emails, they got already, I'll have a response, well, I think. Uh, I really swore so that everybody received, uh, the same thing and. You know, misinformation up there, so the decision to play, I would say, if they were bad. Let me apologize. I don't know, we, we live, we learn, there are times, I still be quite that decision to assume that. There are times when I have to look at the weather, and I'm gambling on. All the snow days, the first thing is, I talk to so many students during weekends, I look at the weather. It may not be snow. But, uh, uh, when I mean that's all, I take student safety, staff safety, what's the end of the day supposed to look like, there's a lot of things. Um, every now and again, let's just call it is, and well, I see we're gonna have a state. And two or three inches of snow falls over the course of the eight hours. Little table, there's enough snow that falls at the right times that people like that will get involved, it wasn't safe to try, but it does not work that way. In hindsight, if I think about last Friday, and I knew I spoke with our, like, director. Please, well, partly, we would have pushed forward. We didn't, time's next, it's twenty twenty, so, let me just start with that. Um, we took student safety into account, um, post game attention to field, so we did go over there, uh, I remember the athletic director, I remember the teacher W. We did, we'll get to field, uh, verbally, Monday, uh, and it was, it's good for me to see what it looked like. That's seen, it's one of the years, I've seen it for a few years, uh, and it's been raining season. I didn't think the field looked. Or, didn't look, be up where the teams stand on either side, hundred percent, no question about it. So we talked with a couple of DPW guys who've been in, I don't know, so it really doesn't look like this way off in many other. So what happened? So, my question to them was, what can we do? Short-term, long, long-term, we can sort of hold up, but we're like, you're enough, I have senior days coming up for a variety of sports, we have the rest of the fall season, what would help? You start with last thing, you get to, we can put long down. And landscaping company coming, place long and flat, so if you were there tonight, I was there, I was there, over earlier this week to see that as well. So company came in, they put long on both sides, where they closed in the whole football player standing there a lot, there's like sixty of the big kids. In uniform, stopping around, so the ground gets compact. The long down, they smoothed it out, they did the same thing, so actually on Monday, they still put the field. Um, inside. Then on Tuesday, they, let's say they brought dirt, um. Smoothed that, so if you're there today, earlier today, tomorrow, you'll see that there's fresh, and we just like sand, and it's, and it's smoothed out. Um, and it'll still look nice, I thought the field was. Solid, playable today, um, they were out there playing. So that's what we need in the short term, we've had other conversations in the last few days about, so what do we do? Uh, and me, and one other conversation, do we need to budget, and this is short, but a few thousand dollars to be able, every October, as a parent. This is me going on. For the performance. We just don't, we just kind of get, so, we have, usually, west, so that may have been part of it. But it didn't sound like that at all, so when we started that conversation, I brought that conversation, you try to hold it out, it's, and say, if you use more of the budget. That, to be able to put long flat in every, you know, middle, about twelve, middle of season, to really have a full fall season for all of our teams. But that's sort of where we're at today, I think, from what I saw today earlier in daylight, and this. Getting rid of the plane. It seemed very playable, and it was probably in better condition, some way that hasn't been in the past, is it perfect? No. Um, it's a, it's a challenging thing, and if you look at some of the pictures, I think I tried to take, I didn't, I did take. Um, I'll show you the next slide, maybe. Or not, there we, so these were pictures, um, um, the day, Monday after the rain, after the rain and after, you can see there's dirt, there's. On one of them, and I don't think you've seen them very well, I kind of know where to look, but there's other tracks on the one far. Right, as you're looking at the screen, I can see that very well, uh, and that was another topic we talked about, that's been longstanding, traditionally, they use a pickup truck, they drive down. Between the track and playing field, that's what they drive and pick up truck and take equipment, set up, volunteer down to football, so that is not like, it's not anything. It's been that way, you know, for very. So we did talk about that, and found that, can we do something different? My experience and most likely, we had either a golf cart or a chair. Uh, so I can now have the. That will be a long topic, so we're not running on, with that, um. So, these are pictures from today, so you can see the fresh dirt, it's flat, you can see it was clearly just painted, uh, by our DPW, by the B T's that we use for soccer. And it was fairly flat, and it looked better than it had, I believe. Point, um, you wanna? Perfect. Think of. But, um, yeah, so I just wanted to let people know. No intention to footfall ahead of anybody else, no intention to exclude anybody from anything. Um, we've certainly learned some lessons from the last week, and we are making changes and better, we had a conversation today, for example, about. Like, I include a lot of people want to make a snowball. Other superintendents. DPW, uh, and that's really, I contact with, so, I can't see the whole town, so I rely on director DPW to say, yeah, that looks fine. Or, no, they're not, so we talked about, do we want to include him in rain calls, since he has more experience. Maybe any of the skills, but maybe we use them, we schedule them. He's got experience maintaining, so we just started that conversation literally today. So, just so people know, it didn't fall on deaf ears, the emails, the questions, great questions, and an opportunity to move forward in a positive way. So, let's, really, talk, anyway, let's see, the green metal, the green metal building topic, another very exciting thing, and this one's coming up on Tuesday. For both here and Fowler, and there will be child care here, we have sort of all possible students, and at least one or more adults, so that's available for people who need it. Um, and it's funny that that's on there for one, I, I've been thinking during this week is, the green metal was, I, and I know this superintendent's goals, green metal is like, number one, right, where you need to go. The town, the town was, and then number two, and I think that's, I mean, that's off the screen, you'll get, so, would be, we want to talk about, we need, we need a place for people to sit. And then finally, number three, uh, can, in my head, starts to land on the field. But first and foremost, immediate, immediate future is the screen metal bill, that's what it's, what I had about. And then, maybe even my report, Colleen, but have a farewell, something, leechers, which I'm not going to spend any time, because we have a lot of people on the agenda, and still, you know, for you. That's it. I appreciate your time and listening to me, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, I'll just go through, um.
Oh, yeah.
Mary, and.
No, not really, I just said, the comments that I did hear about the field was that, you know, the soccer and that, all that, yes, that's what, you know, on, I guess, my question is. We do have, um, coaches, who have been doing this for a number of years, and do they give any feedback, or did we ask them for any feedback, I, I just assumed. I mean, that it's being, you know, it has to fit within the season, and this, you all know, it wasn't approved, what, um. And, you know, conditions, but.
Well, I, I can say that, I haven't heard of that, we've, though, down.
It would be nice to, I hope it would be good to include them, because I wonder if they might have also said, let's just, it just doesn't make any sense to, you know, to play, you know. I think it's great, but no. We'll have comments anywhere in the.
Sure, um, I guess, one thing I'm confused about is, was this a surprise, I guess, after, like, was?
It's what is.
The amount of damage. So, yeah, so you can hit her.
So, interestingly enough, you went to the field. So I think it looked poor on Saturday, once DPW aimed at smoothed it out, we. That, but it's like, it's over. Once they did that. You know, then. All of that.
Because I feel on Monday night. So I don't want to like, you know, like.
It wasn't, it wasn't, let's say, just, I'm probably, it is, it's time to stop, and it wasn't great, so I just want to. Make sure they were all. You know. But let's be clear, parents want to help, you know. I just want to be clear, so that there's not.
A lot of this one, it's not.
All of this, I, you know, on the soccer.
Yes, yeah, so let's, let's, I just want to, yes, um, okay, sorry, sorry.
Um, and then the money that was spent this week.
Yeah.
Um. Was there money for that, and?
So, the majority of that comes out of P's, this particular case.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know.
Eighty percent come from P's.
Eighty percent.
Yeah.
Where was that?
Okay.
I don't think it was earmarked for anything, it's just revenue that comes in at the time.
Okay. Anything else, or?
Um, so, along the lines of that, I guess, it sounds like another, for some of them. Group you, or there's, we need this. I guess, if there's some kind of event that, in Fridays, it's such a, such a, such a. If you have.
I, I, uh, take that as a station.
So, um, I know, thank you very much for other updates, and I know that you and I spoke. But, on the feedback, well, thank you everyone for sharing your, your thoughts, um. I know, in particular, there's. What I tried to also write, King of God talks here, the other story here about, you know, this goes back beyond just what happened Friday, I think that's really part of it, still have. Uh, unresolved areas of concerning questions regarding Fowler and just. Power maintaining, and I, and I think that's part of the larger picture, and I know that, um, the school committee has been engaged, um. Probably more resistance follow on with going to recognition meetings, uh, recently, there were some, because it is an important matter for us to make sure, what can we? What can we do better, how can we get collaboration that's more effective, how do we, I think, everyone's intent. Is, is pure and, and, you know, once was best for our students. I think we need to just really flush out, iron out, um. The procedures, that seems to be what we need to kind of codify in some way, what are our procedures, where is everyone, you know, how does, how does everyone enroll, or not enroll in? Uh, we remain there, it's a pretty small town, like, can't imagine these are insurmountable tasks to figure out. Um, I think the other part two is that recognizing. Um, these are shared resources, we don't have a lot of space that are dedicated specifically for alone. And that's, that's something that's different for Maynard that other towns don't have, so we have to, do really think about that, but. Uh, I look forward to, uh, future updates, I know that, uh, conversation about, just because we have so many conversations going on about facilities in general, and the green metal building, the leechers. I, this will probably be a standing item for our school committee agenda, looking forward about the state of our facilities, because really, we need to kind of keep the eye on the prize, to make sure that we're not losing sight of. The importance of maintaining and just building the confidence that our committee, and a lot of that is to know transparency as well, so, just look at that. Um, and thank you all very much, and I, and I do want to follow up, I know we talked about the vehicles, which was, uh, Mary, do you guys have a question?
I'm not sure if this would address, it would address part of it, uh, this goes way back to when I was running the trail race, um, twenty years ago, but the field was new, and we had rubber runners. So that any vehicle that went across, it wouldn't hurt at least the track. Of course, things to speed up all the time, that wouldn't help, it wouldn't help the field itself, though.
I did add that question today, um, if he had someone, yeah, it would.
They weren't, nobody was here, nobody was here, I'm a little.
But.
In either, so if you think one, we have a tractor. Can we get a trailer that we connected that if you want often, or looking at, as I said, a heater or a baller. Um. Because those are, that's a pretty standard use for schools to transport water bottles, materials, cones, whatever you may be. Uh, around, so. And those are lighter and. They're flat, players, they don't. Field and they can run over the track as well. So we absolutely hear you and we're giving you all of that.
Yeah, at the time, it was brand tracks that we were just trying to, that was, you were adding that we had to do this, but again, sure that they run by the wayside. So, and it wouldn't help the overall, you know.
I was hoping to brush the traffic.
I, I think also just to kind of grab that point about vehicles on our, our spaces is, I think we need, this is the message. That it was for staff, what is it appropriate? What is it not appropriate for? Your emergency, where required for just for units? I think that needs to be really ironed out, it can be given to anyone who is getting, using the one nine field. As including outside, you know. Athletic, things are not made up for the school, so soccer, whatever, you speak, you know, treatments. I just, it's, it's pretty obvious, and we have people driving up and down, I see a car, I'm high stat, and it's just, it's so hard to, you know, miss, and it just. You know, we need some structure there as well, and it can't just be about. It's convenient for one person because it becomes an expensive taxpayers, that's not enough for me to really, they, they should not, no one can make that choice about. Okay, so, anyway.
So you said the whole. You know, um. Definitely higher than work, it's been. Discuss like two years. I think one piece particularly here was the football field, that's important to think about. Is it does get into a gender equality thing where the note of football, you know. If the nights of. Like spectators and the like and all that and. By prioritizing football, that's prioritizing. Not male court, as opposed to the girls soccer, so. When. Like people bring that up, that's, they maybe need to make sure. We have to think about it, it's, it's part of it, it's a review, yeah, I mean, just like you do at school, that's all right, it's just part of a larger conversation. So I, because even if our goal was not to prioritize one court over another, it's an effect where prioritizing boys and girls.
I agree, I don't think we are, but if you were, I think, I totally agree, I think. In any way we pray, we're typing one gender, so we're not going to repeat.
But the thing about equality is. People were impacted by the Twitter, so. You know, girls soccer players feel like boys football is prioritized. They're having that in common, that we got. Into the attention, what attention was.
Alright, so we're not going to resolve this right now, but I just, um, Brian, I, I think we. Really have the recognition has new names that they've scheduled and. I know that there's, the next one is not, I don't know, next, next week update, right? You love it, so, um. It's on a senior night, right, so, um. So maybe, I don't know, maybe we can think about how either who can go or whatever, but for gender, I was, I know of stuff where we've been working. On a report, um, to just get that part that to talk about our budget subcommittee, so maybe that might be some initial conversation. Know. Or quite as well, um, maybe that is not the best place, those these conversations to be doing. Within the recognition because it seems to be a priority to them and our. I know they work closely also with, you know, um, but, um. Potentially, we could have dedicated school thing, they, like, uh, going to a.
Just focused on that. Yeah. Dedicated thing. Especially not have to really, um, be a plan.
I'll reject to, to, to make this the chair, right, so I'll reject to, since that's what we would like to do, and have a, provide the recognition to. A school meeting, then I can, you know, see what's on our calendar, those dates, I know sometimes Thursdays are. What is customer have been. Um, so maybe all of which others we can do. But that's just getting, it's not more expensive. Okay, thank you, uh, now. Moving into public comments, uh, I'm gonna just first recognize the folks in the room, and then, um, then I'll go to everyone online, and then email several staff, so, uh. Uh, Drew. Here, uh, you are up, you're. I know we want to speak, yeah, I can go there, I can just put this over there, listen, but yeah, feel free to. Um.
Thank you very much.
Yes, yeah.
And if you are able to just speak a little bit louder, we only have one microphone, that'd be great.
Andrew Holtz, that's what marks away from here. Uh, I thank you very much for the time and the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'm here to talk about the systemic bias that I believe exists in favor of Mater High School football. Our administration's unwillingness to admit it. And the mistake that was made in favor of football was unfair to all the other sports. Mater High School prioritizes the football program above all other sports, and that could not have been more evident than it was this past weekend. Mater High School had a football game scheduled Friday night at seventeen. There were two soccer matches scheduled on Saturday the next day. On Friday, it rained a lot. So much so, that Friday midday, the school decided to cancel the soccer games that were scheduled the next day. Yet the football game scheduled that night. Was on. Football, yes, soccer, no. The administration knew the weather was bad, and that it would have a negative impact on the field conditions, and they allowed the football game to be played in heavy rain on a natural grass surface. Spectators rushed the field. Players slid on their stomachs across the field in celebration, and a vehicle was driven on the field. All of this was preventable, we had an opportunity to protect them on my field, and we blew it. We should have protected the asset and moved the gate. This has and will continue to affect other activities scheduled a little while for the rest of the fall. You've seen many football games at alumni over the years, some in the rain, the field gets wet, it gets torn up, it happens. Why was this one different? Because this time, the administration made a choice. You decided to cancel one sport, but you allowed the other one to play. And you destroyed the fields for the other teams. Every single rationale applied to canceling soccer also applied to football, yet the two answers were completely different. Where is the fairness at? Since the game. The administration has offered a number of reasons for why the game was played. Sorry, when my field holds water, arguments too much. More examples. Why, what would the administration have thought if there was persistent lightning or a hurricane? They would have had it with the game, right? Of course, the game can be moved. More examples. Why couldn't the gate be moved to Saturday or Sunday? The answer we get is because we need six days rest for football players. If you look at the current schedule for the football team. The JV team had a game on Monday Hudson, their next game is Saturday. That's four days rest, not six, and it's scheduled that way. So there's absolutely no reason we have to wait six days between the games. When the girls soccer team earlier this season asked to move a match. In the interest of player safety due to games being on back-to-back days. Two games. One of them is at six P M, the following day, the second game is at four P M, it's two games in less than twenty-four hours. That request was denied. Where is the fairness at? Safety is important to Mater, right? It's important to our student athletes. How many football games take place with an athletic trainer on staff and on site and paid? All of them, every single one. When the soccer teams ask for an athletic trainer at their games this year, request denied. Due to budget constraints, but we have budget to fix the field. Where is the fairness in that? How many football games are played at night under the lights? All of. How many soccer games are played at night under the lights? Two. Football games are prime time, parents can actually make it to the games to watch their kids. Soccer games take place at four o'clock in the afternoon, I have to take time off of work to watch reach out to soccer. Where is the fairness at? How many football games have had M H S facilities crew spending their day setting up the field? All of them. How many soccer games have the soccer teams arrived at the field and the field is already set up for them? Zero, our players are moving the goals in position for their games. Where is the fairness at? There are countless examples of this systemic bias, but I mean, that the administration is allowing to happen. And it all benefits football and is against the other sports, I've only listed a few, my opinion, this has to change. I know there's a significant history here destroying the field, it all has to change. Our student athletes deserve better, there's an imbalance, and that was reinforced by the administration last week. We are definitely not equitable in how we treat our students athletes. The school committee, I'm asking you to please hold these leaders accountable. The administration, I beg you, thank you, so please start being fair.
Um, not far from two cameras, and I'm here to. Uh, with a very similar, but slightly reversed this message. It's very important, basically, the body that they need to have several video meetings and the product trust this. But the decisions that will be, of the one guy. Basically rendered both the dog. As Drew pointed out, and we said, I don't know any more. The decision that was made, cancel soccer thing. What people fall after two minutes of the rain, it's fall. You know, with flag fire, five mark engines. That's what we're taking call, five minute. So if, or one night field was a resource for all. On that night, the resource were sixteen banner ice cream. Sixteen. There are a hundred and twenty mission. Who can set play sports, football. Sixteen of them. On that football. We prioritize sixteen members fifty seven. Now, this is not against the students. And this is not against the football, hats off to them. For playing those conditions and getting a great room and a community uproar and support. Love it. But speaking of equity, they weren't. One more real soccer team. Not one mentioned from the administration. In any of you, in any of you. So. Great idea, I don't want this to come off all the same soccer versus football, but. This has to be recognized as a, we have a set of resources. That are not being adequately and fairly distributed amongst. We're in a circle. And I don't, I don't, yeah. I don't have to reiterate that. But just to point out that in canceling that match on Saturday, those two matches, or rather, excuse me, postponing one match. And canceling the other. You disenfranchise the entire team. The JV soccer team lost the game. They're not in the game. So. Where's the fairness? How, how does that make sense in any shape, in any way, should it? Uh, the football team has plenty of rival legs. Left wing team. And there's also Monday night. And Wednesday nights that they could play, there's Saturday nights. If we're not going to have soccer on Friday, Tuesday, Thursday night, soccer, we can use those ones too. So there are plenty of. The limitation schedule. Forty-three members of the football squad, sixteen of them per meter. They range from nine grade to twelve. All weekly dress Friday night, I don't know how many of them dress for the baby game, I never saw, but I can't imagine. We're honoring the schedule restriction, six-day rest period. For the player, for the players that. There's just a lot of myths and legends. That get perpetuated and we're allowed to continue to have. Uh, riding on the field, for example. Uh. There's, there's just no reason. Forty-three kids, maybe each one of them a marker, they can walk across. Soccer players carry their own equipment. Soccer players set up the training, soccer players can leave with the train. There's no reason. To drive the field. At birth. Unless an ambulance needs to go there to actually get a child. None. Alright, so what I would like, after this, uh, long story, I actually would like to see some agenda items from the school committee. To get transparency, to get the clarity. To address the topics that we've had in other meetings. That this has come up in the recognition meetings and the Catholic meetings, these are not the question when I was at school, all that's on C P C. You know, with our fields, uh, working, uh, with, uh, C P C on playgrounds. You know, all the recreation resources that made, the transparency is not there, we don't know with it, I would love this, these could be football, but I put up agenda. And agenda to present the budget. For athletes, the costs associated with the actual Boston curve, and the revenue is generated, you know, we know that there's fields that are rented, we know that they're, so. Uh, we know that there are gates that are taken, right, and I take, so what, what are those budgets? Broken down by sport. By gender, let's see how it's applied, we want to have that transparency, it's been asked multiple times. When I was on the C P C, I asked for that, still there, still have that. A second, a second agenda to go with scheduling process. How is it decided that football is going to play every Friday night? And soccer? Doesn't get any better. Field hockey doesn't get any better. Why, they could all be using that same resource. And then any other information that the school committee can throw at it to explain or to address how what they're doing either is compliant. And is equitable there or? To identify ways that we can make this that report there. Now. There are often, you know, we know the, the, uh. Leacher project is on the, on the table, there's so, there's lots of talking about how to rehab that surface at one night field, perfect, two other things, right? We just came from Florida. Visualize. A natural grass. They play football on that field. They play field hockey on that field, they play soccer. And it was. It did not look like it had a pit hole racer down the side. It did not have the sidewalk, touchline areas, or nothing. So we know a natural grass field, it probably maintained with careful. Can be used by the entire school by for all of those sports. So we love to see school committee present to us, where are your marks, and then start making the formal decisions about how to report. Because right now, great idea to have a recognition and have a joint session, but till we have this data. We're just going to be taught, and this is the same talking we've been doing since you started the dollar field topic back in twenty seven. That's, that's, at least that's a little bit of what I can. Thank you very much.
Ryan, I used to ask that. And terrifying question. How much is the M I A getting quality test, you know? If with the, under the lights and.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
The M I A will. Moves only for the playoffs and tournaments. They provide us with guidelines. Under which we may operate our programs if we wish to be eligible. As lead members and be eligible to play in their tournaments. However, when we play their tournaments. Um, even if it's on our field. That house that is generated goes directly to the.
I was more thinking in terms of, you know, Friday night lights, like the football games, it's, is it because that's the way that they dictate the schedule? Um, you know, that kind of factor would be happening.
Um, it is not my, that would be.
Okay, so that, so that's a good, that's a good thing to know, so we're not restricted by that, for some reason, I thought they got involved in the. The, you know, the game structure and stuff like that too, but that's.
Because I think it's long banners, be a flash, get together as a B. Decide who's going to play, who will play.
Right, so it is, am I, am I just, there's the public comments, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I think these are all good, but I just can't make sure of recognize. So, uh, Colleen, I didn't see anyone, um, on the line, I missed them. Is that right?
There are no other emails.
Okay, I know we have the one that we got earlier.
But I believe, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, um, you spoke yours, so.
Yeah, because I didn't know we'd make it back.
Okay, okay. You don't know, are you ready this? You're okay. So I don't know, so dear school committee, it would, um, I would like to address the continued lack of record stewardship. Of our funding fields, programs and regulation. Resources being demonstrated by the main of public schools administration. This has been a topic of discussion in years. Now, follower of fields. Our new task force and alumni scene, I would like to. Understand the decision process in public school uses to schedule events as well as. Criteria by which they are postponed or canceled. Specifically events. Uh, twenty eighth, uh, to twenty ninth of September, in conjunction with historical practices. Show the students, different sports are treated differently when it comes to ensuring and people opt to the eight side. On twenty ninth of September and thereafter, mayor of course, administration did the follow. Resonate a September thirtieth, boys varsity soccer match. Canceled a thirty, uh, September thirtieth, boys varsity, uh, junior varsity soccer match. Some franchise, China team played, uh, boys varsity footballing. In five mark conditions described by the telegram, it's that committed people to drive on. in five mark condition described by the telegram, the Zed committed people to drive on the ninety field. Moving the action for third boy varsity next to air, people's alumni boys. On my field, there are resources for the entire student avenue. Decisions about its use must be done with consideration of the approximately hundred and twenty mainers to happen to be playing all sports, not just the best team play football. As I mentioned, your agenda items, when I spoke to you to a representation of budget costs for everything, the resources implied to make physical athletes including breakdown by sport and gender. Stabilizing process resulting, uh, process result resulting in soccer and on the magic, that would become under the blank shore and people who actually give me any other relation with school committee, because it's common question, how to practice towards all student efforts, except for this entire, the comments. Uh, it was about, like, that. And I, I know, and since we know, but it's not in the, to the school committee, to the public comment, so I did respond to her, but I had to get her, again, I imagine she said something.
I think she just intended to include it, not necessarily, but.
Okay. Alright, and then, um, there's no one online, we said, call me, right? So no other, see no other hands raised on online and nothing in our email. Uh, I think what I would ask the school committee is to, uh, just based on what we've heard. Wanna send, ask a question to how I'll consolidate them and share them with Brian, so we can, we can evolve this in a more cohesive way, and we have some direction from the school committee on things to follow along. Uh, that's some, yeah, reasonable, right? Alright, thank you all very much. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item. I think this is, is we're giving the update for the next school, or no? Yes, 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 right. Hello?
Oh, I'm here to find the two methods of this. Um, the next hearing. Um, if we actually can flip forward to the next slide. I'll talk a little bit about what NEAS is. NEAS is kind of like a club for educators. It is our accreditation organization, but it's voluntary. Our level of participation or whether we wish to be accredited at all is voluntary. There's nothing requiring. However, choosing to jump through the hoops of NEAS is like a seal of quality. And it is accepted all around the world as being part of an elite. Everything in the NEAS process is voluntary. So here tonight, we voluntarily have Jean Lavelle Pierce and Hannah Fulham, who has stepped up from the faculty to be part of our steering. The really unique thing about NEAS accreditation, this is by teachers for teachers. So teachers, librarians and administrators will come to visit and read reports written by teachers, librarians and administrators. They come, they make recommendations and they re-accredit or put on warning, or even in some cases deny accreditation. A very interesting thing about NEAS recommendations is that they are collaborative. The faculty members at the school we visit have input into what recommendations are made. And certainly can deny a recommendation if they think it was outrageous and there's a whole process for doing. Interestingly, twenty years ago, because they're every ten years, a NEAS visit gave a recommendation of a facilities and put Maynor High School on. Because the building of the old Maynor High School was no longer meeting the needs of the students. And that was part of the process that resulted in the beautiful and very usable facility we are lucky to teach and learn today. So they can give and they ask for input from the faculty and the community. They will make recommendations, but they will be recommendations that we want them to and that we abide into. If that makes sense to you. We can go to the next slide. So what will happen? They are coming for their ten-year visit. And a team of teachers, counselors, administrators, librarians will come to Maynor High School from March tenth to March thirteenth. They will have written everything that we submitted. We'll be submitting a lot of materials between that and to show them how well we're living up to what we planned to do before they arrived. They will observe as many classes as they can. They will talk with as many students and adults in our community as they can. And they will check to see if what will be reported matches what they see and hear. And they will tell us the results. It's a completely collaborative process. You, as a school committee, have a role. They have asked already that you call a public meeting for the evening of March Hila twenty twenty-four with NEAS visiting committee as the agenda item. And they will come ask you questions, answer questions. They'll give you a little preview of what they're seeing. And you ask for your input and your experiences. We plan to report to you in, uh, January or February. We're much closer to our finished product of what we want them to be at and reviewing. And we'll ask for your feedback tonight and also when we visit again, closer to the time. We want to all be on the same page. A few weeks after the visit, the chairman of the committee will write us a letter and it will have our commendations, our recommendations and their decision whether to recommend re-accreditation. None of us are worried that there's anything that would warrant not being re-accredited. We are just looking for those recommendations. We're looking for them to be aligned with our vision and helpful for us as we plan the next. So they came and visited in twenty twenty-two. They do a pre-visit now, something new in this new decennial cycle that is not from the past. And we got some praise. We like praise. They loved our safe, positive, respectful and inclusive culture that ensures equity and honors diversity and identity and thought. So please know, if we made public comments and talked about those issues, they were heard because those things are very important to us. They praised our opportunities for students to regularly engage in inquiry, problem solving and higher order thinking in their elective courses and in the senior project. They praised our programs, services and support provided to English language ones, our students with special needs and students with other specialized languages. And they praised the community for providing adequate funding to fully implement the curriculum, co-curricular activities and other learning opportunities. Which doesn't mean we have nothing to learn or. Again, just with the. And we got recommendations. And these were collaborative recommendations. As a movement team at that time, but Mr. Kara Gens, Ms. Lavelle Pierce, Ms. Fulham were with the team and they knew what they wanted and this is what we want. We were asked to develop a written vision of the graduate. And I asked Mick, if you'd be part of that project last year when you visited in Southland School. That is a project we worked on all year. All courses will have written curriculum maps in a consistent format that includes units of study, essential questions, concepts, et cetera, tied to the vision of the graduate. So the faculty has been working hard as we consolidated the vision of the graduate to sort of re write those curriculum maps, thinking more about the twenty-first century skills. Um, number three is one with a lot of meat. That's gonna be a ten-year project for us. The word consistent, that learners will consistently engage in inquiry, problem solving and higher order thinking skills across the curriculum at every grade. That's not a quick fix. That's a project. And then school counselors will add two more social motion support groups in the two years in between visits. And we also have just. So the vision of the graduate is all done except for the graphics. Um, it's based on our former academic, social and civic competencies, but it's been changed into can statements. And I won't read them all to you, but they're packed if you look at them. And there are going to be, in some courses, they've already finished creating bricks that unpack these can statements. But we're lucky enough to have Jean Lavelle Pierce here tonight with us. Her senior project class is the culminating end of the vision of the graduate. That's where sit down and evaluate whether this student can do a task, has the skills. They're not all a hundred percent when they graduate, but it's a great vision. It's a great vision. And the ones who are report back to us that they are more than ready for all that is shown. College, career, internship, travel, jobs, exciting ones. We're on the right track. The graphic will be revealed. It is currently within the hands of two of the best graphic design students who can do better work probably than most of us at that school. And we are very, very excited to reveal. So when, if you can imagine what the vision of the graduate paper will look like or what it will look like on our website. You'll see these can statements and then you'll see the graphic. And it will have some of the key skills embedded in. It's, it's, it's very.
I'm very excited.
So I hope you have to worry that, um, we are ready to talk to them about all four of our recommendations. I think the biggest one was getting the vision of the graduate project done. Faculty were amazing. Really engaged. We had many sessions where we did jigsaw, putting the faculty together in different rooms and just going over lists of skills again, yet reading articles about what to be for the twenty-first century. We interviewed students, parents, community members. Got lots and lots of advice. And I'm very, very proud of the can statements and very eager to finally grapple. So at this point, all three of us can answer questions. Probably Mr. Ferregianis must be answering. So if you want to look back at our presentation or talk with us, I've brought experts, cause I'm new to the team.
I will. Thank you very much. Uh, I know we're all very excited. We've been talking about this for quite a bit and can't wait to see the, the vision of our student. Uh, so I'm gonna go and go around the school member, Mary.
Yeah, absolutely. And this is like so exciting. It's fantastic. Thank you all for all the hard work you've been doing on it. So I had one question because there was one priority growth area that I don't think is addressed here, but maybe it's incorporated into one of the other ones. Um, it said that, um, the high school will reinstate the school improvement process to create a school improvement plan. Is that incorporated into this stuff?
I was just. Yeah, I'll answer that one. That's been, um, that was rejected by us because it had already been done.
Okay, cause I know we had one, but I didn't know we had, if we were supposed to.
It was a little COVID, my sub miscommunication, but we have had the school improvements I had to continue. So they, they very willingly took it off.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say the same thing. This COVID happened and our normal planning process was not one for two years now. It's been reinstated as a term.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, and just, okay, so it's, it's one thing to, to put this all in paper and it looks, it's gonna look amazing. And then how does it trickle down to classrooms?
Through the curriculum. The curriculum maps, Joe, so this, it's a big course. Well, actually, uh, we want to give a speak to that.
Well, the way, the way we're formatting the paths is with those vision of graduate context in mind, so that we're able to really pull our instruction on making sure that that is the outcome. That we're not just teaching necessarily our content areas, but we're making sure that students are able to access those other skills through our content areas. So the way we've redone our fourth thing, mass that specifically called out in each area that we are teaching what the skill that we are trying to go with in points in that area of our.
I would answer that because, um, when we look at. I'm louder maybe too, sorry. Yeah, it's one of the things. I'll just project. Yeah, the. Right, we've been meaning, that's the district really, right, to figure out how we build career awareness. Um, just in terms of like an April portfolio. Um, I think you're, you're putting a comprehensive plan together to make sure that we see, you know, all the child progression, there's where we're going, doing problem solving. Um, so I think, yeah, I think you're right. The, the key is to look at how kids are gonna.
So as we're like doing the new math curriculum, for instance, cause we're going, you know, case group two L, that's gonna be incorporated. So it will be, as you say, right through the whole school system, one of the subject matters. Fantastic. Thank you. And, um, my last question is, um, what, what should we do to plan? It's spoken to me. I don't wanna mess this up. I'm gonna be on, you know, on call. Um, is there any preparation that we should be doing? Obviously, it's too early for that, but it's, um, like the types of questions they're gonna be asking us and that kind of thing.
I'm invited to bring one of my, um, steering committee colleagues with me to a planning seminar. And I will get more information at that seminar. And when we come to you to do our report right before the visit, that shows our final planning samples, what everything looks like that we prepared. We'll have a slide or two that are just for you as far as your preparation. You'll also have our vision. You know, in all of our foundation of documents.
Oh, so this question may be totally out of the, to the advice of, they could provide accreditation for that, but I thought so. Uh, the curriculum maps, if they're being worked on now, um, are they outlining what's the curriculum be going for in the future? And so the current curriculum that's in place with the student that's observed when they come in March, would it, is it with the curriculum maps or the curriculum maps are writing down, it's currently made done? So they are consistent or is that not something that matters?
Um, oh, curriculum maps matter. No, actually, no, it's an excellent, it's actually really an excellent question. We've been working on the curriculum maps. We've had preview documents of these bullet points, the can statements for a long time and they're based on our prior competencies. These didn't come from nowhere. When the faculty and Chuck developed the competencies originally, that was a, in a very deep, deep process that a lot of thought and time went into and a lot of vote. And um, we didn't want to reinvent the wheel. We just wanted to streamline it and they can choose some of the language that was a little outdated and make it more about skills. But so the answer to the question is, they've been working on this for really almost a year, if not some people have been working on it, but very, some people work on their curriculum maps all the time. And the curriculum maps, they're at a, a very high, they're at that thirty thousand foot level. They show the scope and sequence of the entire course and what the units look like. But teachers adjust on the daily plan level always. It's part of the craft.
So the automated folks won't be looking at the curriculum map. It seems like by, you know, two thirds of the way through, you should be doing this and you're not doing that.
They might. They, that's an excellent question to ask. If they're at that level, level of granularity, looking at practice. But the teacher will have a reason why they're doing it. And if there's a disparity, that's something that comes back to the, to the steering committee and talk.
Alright, thank you.
Was that, yeah, I mean, it's part of what, by asking and I'm going to list, um, we had to, you know, as we are transitioning over to um, so we matter that we can have a page, for example, the math curriculum is going. Yeah, um, in March, that is like sort of in the, in the possible, I don't think I knew that.
I don't believe we can, I, and that makes. Things will change eventually, but I don't believe the pilot is, is at us. We should be solid this year.
Okay. And then some, some districts do make those. I'm having on the website somewhere.
I don't see why not. Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they've been asked.
And then about Jane directly. Well, this year's gonna be better. That's one of the, so I don't think. And then I was wondering if you'd like to shout out as the steering committee because I know this is hard work, so.
Thank you so much. That's such a good idea. Not able to join us tonight were uh, Jamie, Santiago, Bonnie, and Amy, Patrice.
Thank you so much. I'm happy to talk. So thank you. Yeah. And sorry, when was that? So you were, that's training that you're going to do with them?
I have to pick a date in November and I have to pick a call. He could sort of, um, I have to bomb. She so does not.
Thank you all for going through this. And see, it's a lot of work. Um, and, and I remember when I first moved to Maynor, um, when the high school got off probation because of the building itself. And I was thinking, that's okay, we're gonna clear it out. And here we are, we're so better than where we were before. So, um, I, um, yeah, the only major question that I have was been changing with about the brick maps. I know that many um, uh, parents have asked over the years um, for the brick map to be put on website. Uh, and I don't, I've never seen them. So, um, it would be great once we do get this finalized, assuming that'll happen right before the, the final meeting.
Oh, okay. That's our, our.
Alright. Um, yeah, it would be great to have those, those up on the website. Um, and fully acceptable, not like too far, right, um, into the website for those.
No, I'm not. So, um, so before I thought, I thought, you know, but um, and legitimately, you had a train here. So on day forty four, what am I talking to? And I just don't, I just would caution people to really think that these are living through documents, but because of that, they shouldn't be taken as the, you know, the one and only, they're cool, we're all the ones actually. Like, and I think that should be something to educate the community without, um, because things can evolve. It, it, even when you come on, I didn't, it's certain forces to, but we have something. I just think.
It's scope and sequence. And it's really not much.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good, yeah, yeah. You know, a lot of people being limited in their innovations because of the first.
Correct. If you have to, the teacher has to be tested, you might, we actually urge them to try the new activity that is.
So, so again, my question in response to that is, um, if that, say that new activity was huge success, would that be committed by the next year or, you know, a perfect path?
Hopefully it would be added because for each unit, you usually put a few different activities that would fit that unit. But none of us in the classroom do every activity every year with every group because everybody is so different. And if something incredible is happening, current events that fits, sometimes we do that.
Um, thank you very much for everything that you were doing. I have just two things I wanted to follow. One about the school improvement plan. I think you were saying that it was something that had been cured from um, rectifying. I did see that at your high school, one is posted on the website. That is the most I was for the last year's um, school answer. That, that's the one I was, I guess, providing to them.
The one from the year before, actually. Oh, the one, Mr. Kerragian.
We, we came out of COVID. It looked like the next year was going to open normally, which did. So we instituted the normal student planning process. And it was kind of interesting when they were actually visiting and just finalized it, maybe a couple days before. And they said, well, you don't have, I said, period.
I know those, those are the ones that are together with the school councils, right? The school councils and so they, they, you know, separately, you know, how many of those are possible, but also comes to the school committee. The school improvement plan, that's what I mentioned about, you know, revisiting, making sure that those, those steps are also happening. Because I totally did, but um, a day involved on how we rate each other as well. Uh, so thank you for that. And then as it relates to the, the curriculum, the planning, I often wonder if, I do agree that we do know one of the elements we're asking about, you know, curriculum, but I also wonder sometimes if there's a if there's a confusion maybe with uh, like framework, you know, if what is, you know, be required for the state, um, because I, I do hear, you know, your word caution as far as they are, you know, kind of working documents. And what I don't know, what I would like to see is that we post something and then we're not able to really update it on a frequent basis that it needs to for all the amended, but it, and then it becomes more how it will not useful and not current, you know, with the So I think it's a fine balance, right? And how much do we, maybe educate um, to your family, so like, this is our curriculum that we provide the framework versus mapping, where's that fine line and try, but I do think some access to that is important to how, I just don't know what, what, you know, level of brand higher to make sure it's manageable.
I'm thinking that some of them could also be linked to the program of studies.
They do have that at schools. Uh, I think also goes back to, are we updating that on a regular basis?
Update of the program of studies every year. That is a process. Yeah, since.
I don't know, just.
I think, yeah, I've never worked in a high school that didn't update the program of studies everywhere, or at least pretend to. We do it really.
Thank you very much. I, I think that's all that I have. Uh, so thank you all for your work and then towards many more. Getting our homework.
How we need that to be day students.
Yes.
Make sure it has. You have to be transparent and you're very good as a committee at asking questions. They are going to really want to hear those questions and answer them. So when I make a quiz, when we're, if I fail. So when they show a pass or fail, thank you very much. You're very.
I need to go meet my daughter dinner now. It's the, it's the mold, allergies. It's like the killer bee. But I don't recommend turning.
Okay, so um, looks like we're moving on to our feature project, uh, update.
So I am happy to say, Phil, thank you so much for hanging in there. Uh, I'm trying to create a destiny. I think someone's gonna be on one screen and have an opportunity to see. But we had started working with an O P M, uh, college international and hope to remember that it's insane. In person, so long though, I'm probably working on the metal project. He's working on the, on that field features project. So I mean, one would say. But if, Phil, I know I can't see you, but your screen, you have control of the screen. It's all you.
Right. Thank you. Super time has and good evening, school committee. Uh, thank you for your time. So I'll jump right into it. We'll start off with a project status update. So Colliers was contracted to be the O P M on the alumni field bleachers project on September fifth. From there, we had a project kickoff meeting with the town and school district and jumped into designer selection. Our designer request for qualifications went live on September twentieth. We had a designer walk through a week later on the twenty seventh. And we are due to get the designer qualification packages submitted to us on October eleventh. And then the idea is the second half of October, we'll be reviewing those qualification packages, reference checking, potential designer interviews. And then the plan is to have a fee uh, presented to the school committee and select board, both their first meetings in November for approval uh, to contract with the shortlisted design team. And then from there, we would move into design and permitting. That would be essentially a second half of November through April of next year, which will lead into spring town meeting of next year for the vote for the project's construction funding. The project scope we have illustrated in the designer request for qualifications is the home side bleachers and press box replacement. Accessible path from Great Road to the new bleachers. And then as an add alternate, replace the existing concession building with a new toilet slash concession slash storage building. So simultaneously, while we're kind of working our way through designer selection, we dug into the two funding sources for the design of the project. So on the left hand side is the already established town budget, we'll call it, or field budget. And then on the right hand side is the CPC grant. So the town budget on the left hand side, that was provided to me by the town accountant. The top half of it shows different bleacher rental um, expenditures. Uh, bleach, visitor side bleacher demo expenditure. It shows a free cash deposit of fifty thousand dollars. But ultimately, if you work your way down that top half, it shows a budget balance of approximately a hundred and sixty four K. And then the lower half of that budget layout shows anticipated expenditures. So O P M for the project, a hundred grand, that's Colliers contract amount. You got anticipated bleacher rental costs. And then I'm showing an arrow pointing to a line item that is titled design non CPC eligible items. So that, that number I'll, I'll speak to or that value I'll speak to in the upcoming slides. But ultimately, without that value inputted, it's showing currently this, this town budget, when you include those anticipated expenditures, you're looking at a, a remaining balance of twenty thousand eight hundred ninety five dollars. Right hand side is CPC grant. And this is just some snapshots from the, from the actual language with, language within the grant. But I'll just give you high level, um, how the grants laid out. The grant will fund the design effort for the design of the bleachers and the accessible path to the bleachers. As well as any due diligence engineering that is linked to the design of the bleachers or accessible path. So for example, um, geotech borings or some type of test pits, if we want to check out subsurface conditions to understand foundation design for the new bleachers, that would be incorporated in the CPC grant. What's excluded from the CPC grant is the O P M fee. And any design effort associated with the concession building design and the press box design. And the, the max amount on the CPC grant is two hundred K. So with those, with that understanding of those two funding sources, we created a budget and sources uh, spreadsheet. So I'll kind of run through on the left hand side of the slide. I got eight budget line items. I'll, I'll kind of quickly run through them. The first three budget line items are associated with the design effort. And we broke them down based off of how the CPC grant is broken up. So top one, design effort for bleachers and accessible path, sixty thousand three seventy five. Now, these are estimates. Um, and they're, they're based off of um, estimates uh, given to the athletic director um, from past studies done on this bleacher replacement project. We feel comfortable with them. Second, design budget line item is the design effort for the press box, ten thousand three fifty. And then design effort for the concession restroom slash storage building at seventy three thousand three twelve. Hazmat sampling of the existing concession building, five thousand. Geotech engineering at the bleachers, seventy five hundred, the O P M fee of a hundred K. So that's a total of two hundred fifty six thousand five hundred thirty seven dollars for the project design budget. So that budget to get you to town meeting spring of next year. So then the next columns talk about the sources. So you got your CPC grant. So understanding that that grant will find, it will fund the design for the bleachers and accessible path. That's, that's sixty thousand three seventy five. And it will fund the due diligence associated with the bleacher design. So that's geotech engineering, seventy five hundred. So that CPC grant, total sixty seven thousand eight hundred seventy five dollars. The O P M, um, hundred K, that's already, when I say already budgeted, that shows up in that that already established town budget, they have that coming for when they show the anticipated costs at the lower part of that town budget. And then items that are non CPC eligible in terms of the design effort. So you got the design of the press box, ten thousand three fifty. Design of the concession building at seventy three thousand three twelve. And then the hazmat sampling of the existing concession building at five K. So that, that totals in terms of non CPC eligible budget, eighty eight thousand, six hundred and sixty two dollars. If you take that away from your remaining budget balance of twenty thousand eight hundred ninety five dollars, you have a budget deficit in that already established town budget of sixty seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty seven dollars. So we said, let's do another budget and sources layout that shows it without the concession building in the project scope to see what that breaks down to. So top one, design of the bleachers and accessible path hasn't changed. Design of the press box hasn't changed. Remove the design effort for the concession building. Remove the hazmat sampling for the, of the existing concession building. Still have the geotech, still have the O P M. So that design budget now goes down to a hundred and seventy eight thousand, two hundred and twenty five dollars. CPC grant, that'll still fund the sixty seven, sixty thousand three seventy five for the design of the bleachers and accessible path. And still contribute to the seventy five hundred for the geotech engineering. So this total has not changed. Already budgeted for O P M to a hundred grand. That's already in that established town budget. So now the non CPC eligible items reduced to just the design effort for the press box, which is the ten thousand three fifty. So if you take ten thousand three fifty away from that twenty thousand eight ninety five remaining budget balance, you have a budget surplus of ten thousand, five hundred and forty five dollars. So the big question for the school committee, now that we have designers reviewing the R F. now that we have designers reviewing the RFQ and due to get us responses to the RFQ next week. The question is, do we want to remove the concession building scope from the project? Or do we want to hold on continuing on with designer selection until more project funds are approved for the project? Any questions?
That's, that's a big ask right here. I know. Uh, thank you. Thank you very much for uh, so let me just make sure I'm synthesizing what the ask is and you're needing this answer right now? From school, right, to give direction before we're proceeding with approving the designer. Is that correct?
That would be the idea. Correct. Yes. Now, if this, one thing I would add to that. If the school committee isn't prepared to make this vote tonight, that's fine. The vote could happen at some point in November. What I would recommend is, or what I would do is I would issue an addendum to the designer RFQ indicating that we're going to push out the qualification submission date to at some point in November, say, and I wouldn't be concerned that that would be kind of pushing us back design wise. We, we got, we got some somewhat, some somewhat fluff in that design schedule to get from now till the end of April.
Um, yeah, I think there's a couple of things that just thinking out loud that comes to mind is one. Uh, I think you probably need to process a bit about the commitment of funds for, that's not a significant amount, but I'm seeing it's about over sixty eight thousand dollars. And I think I would like an opportunity for the, at least the budgets I'm committing to, I'll think about this and maybe provide a recommendation back to the school. Uh, after we, you know, we've got a lot of larger picture things, the impact of what that maybe would be. Um, then I see a couple of school committee, like not a uh, potentially to think that. The other thing too is that what is that vote told us to now is an impact or eventually to not consider that later. And I, you know, I don't want to, I just, there's a couple of things that just kind of come to mind. So I'm, I'm going to say probably it's based not reading the voters tonight. But it's certainly given us a lot of, I think the, the option that doesn't include the uh, commitment for the concession. I think, I don't think there's any probably objection. I'll just go with the school committee that that would be something to be able to proceed with, but uh, let me just try to. There's two different options. There's.
Yeah.
That is there anymore? So that. So that we have the bad option A. Okay. So what I understood is that we don't have to vote on concession commitment of funds tonight. You do that in November. That, is that correct?
Well, so so right, well, no, so because this is gonna this is gonna affect the, the, when we shortlist a firm, we want to do a fee negotiation with design firm wise. That's going to be, they're going to be submitting on either a design scope that has them designing a, a replacement of this concession building or does not. So so I, I, what I'm saying is the vote to either remove it or not remove it, that vote can happen at some point in November. What I would do is I would not, I, I, I would push off their submission date so that that could be, that vote could happen and I could via addendum indicate that if, if there's a change that say it's no longer in the project, I would put that in the addendum.
Okay. All right. Thank you for clarifying. So we won't vote tonight. We will process more as um, and yeah, I didn't go through, I mean, some questions, uh, but I just want to make sure our expectation for what we require tonight. It's just some Q and A to you and then go for how to make a decision at a. Um, on that. So um, is that, is that, is that all right?
Uh, so I'm sorry. Did you say at a November meeting make the vote? Was that?
Yeah, we can make a vote at the, at the, at a November meeting, correct?
Yep. That's perfect.
Okay. So I'm going to go to the school committee and just um, somebody wants some questions for you, Mary?
Yeah. So Phil or Brian, when we get the money from CPC, it was two hundred thousand from them and fifty thousand from the town. And we're talking about sixty eight thousand being qualified. So what's, what are we, what's going on with the additional hundred and eighty thousand dollars? Is that what's going to go for the site survey and the cost estimating when you say with design? I don't, I don't, I don't understand. We're always a fraction of it.
So basically what you're, you're looking at is like this is was approved and you want to see what the expense.
So, so it looks like what is qualified is sixty eight thousand dollars out of the two hundred and fifty thousand that we received, two hundred from CPC. Thousand from the town. So we had two hundred and fifty thousand uh, that we were given between the two resources and it looks like only sixty eight thousand is actually qualified for CPC funding. Am I reading that right? So there's a hundred thousand basically that we've got available. So is that hundred and eighty thousand going to be like the site survey and the cost estimating?
So you, you, you gotta understand something. So you can't, you can't say you have two hundred fifty grand because two hundred grand of that has stipulation on it that says it's only good for this, this and this. So when you add that stipulation, that two hundred grand is only sixty eight grand. So you got sixty eight grand and that's that CPC grant column. And then you have that fifty grand and, and that's incorporated right here.
I see. Okay.
So, so e- everything that was voted on recently, that's all incorporated in, in these numbers.
All right. Thank you. I just need that clarification. My other is, and this is, and maybe this is premature to have this conversation, but I just want to throw it out there. That there's talk about bringing this up at sprint town meeting. I still want to go to CPC for them to pay part of the features. I think that we should get their deadline is October thirteenth. And I know I brought this up a couple of times, but I really think that we should, you know, go back to them and ask them for some of the funding of this because the, you know, it's possibility and then it would be less on the taxpayers um, for another article. So I don't know whether we just put a blanket um, application into them or whatever, but I really want to pursue that. Um, if they say no, then they say no, but at least they want that option.
And that's uh, so October the deadline is October thirteen?
Yeah, for, for anything, any present take for any submission.
Okay. I wonder if it would be helpful to, like just thinking about a timeline and what we oriented last year, do we have an application to bring stuff back? Just to get on their, their. Right. Is there a timeline that we might be able to just? And they might deny it later. I think whatever it's about, we're seeking additional information that.
Try and help the taxpayers by not, even if they can give us a million dollars out of, out of it, you know, for whatever with qualifying CPC. And I know the press box isn't part of it and that, but again, if we could just help the taxpayers. Um, I, I think it moves us to, to do that. I know this isn't the first time that I brought it up, so hope it's not coming as a surprise, but I really think we should um, push that.
That's correct. For CPC with the last year, maybe just come to this year. Um, we'll talk. Yes, that's right. Or if you do the third. Will there be enough? Well, don't be, if we have a vote. So I will, um, I will reach out to C C S, she said. No, yeah, um, oh, that's others. Now, my fans gentlemen, I don't know if they're even on their radar because I know that they did allow some put in initial interest that you kind of go in an event here. So maybe it might be something like that, but I, I don't know who have a choice to vote by.
Hold on a minute. I mean, it's one of the ten. Particularly, uh, choose to do that. Uh, to sort of to show up early.
Yeah, we have to, we have to, at least we just, I don't, we have to go on. What we submit by the thirteen. I mean, a vote, a vote and submit it, but this is a lot to decisions that are happening at the moment right now. So we process this event and then see.
Oh, we're, we're, we're hoping to have.
Yeah.
On the ten, if it's not meeting. So.
It's, it's a point we noticed though, but it's only business that's going to be discovered at town meeting. We don't have an agenda separate for that. So that's. Um, I don't know now because we have. Okay.
It's not right. First time that I brought it out.
Yes, and my, my name is Holland. So then they're, so that's where, so about posting. Uh, we, by the other, we'll do like a six Thursday or.
Maybe, maybe do a book statement. It's like a.
No, it probably.
Well, I haven't given that just this.
Well, the bleacher project is. And they say that.
We said that.
I'm not really. Yeah.
Yes, that's it. Um, can we vote or something? If something like it, you know. Why would we ever think of using that we're? Maybe this.
How do we make motion to vote now to approve a submission thirteen of specialty? It could be that we are going to so your interests like to, you know, to proceed there, but kind of authorize me to work with Brian to, you know, look done with uh, our, for um, you know, on behalf of the school committee to take the first step to meet the deadline for the CPC. Um. I don't know. That's kind of what comes to mind. I think about that. Investigating how to, what we need to do to get on CPC's maybe CPC's deadline of the thirteen and authorize you to sign whatever application would need to be signed on behalf of, on behalf of school committee in order to.
Anything else we need to think about there?
Colleen, as it relates to the church.
As it relates to.
Findings, findings. Colleen, did you get a discussion?
Is there anything we forgot there?
I don't know. I don't know. That's what she said. Okay, great. All right. So uh, any further discussion? Okay. All right. So I will do that. Um, and obviously.
I know that's the part, okay?
Okay. All right. Sorry. Uh, I got sidetracked because we're having a parallel funding. And that has some time sensitivity to it with the CPC. So uh, thank you for uh, hanging time there. Uh, who were we with questioning just now? Yeah, Hillary.
Okay. So my question um, might sound silly, um, but can you help me understand the uh, how large these numbers are? I know that a couple of years ago, I was hearing talk about five hundred thousand total for the bleachers. And I feel like when they, if we try to get community support for um, this restroom and concession building and just the design plans themselves are over sixty thousand. I think people are going to think about the cost of their, their house. That's larger for comparable size to this concession building and think how, how do these numbers make sense? And I personally don't really understand the volumes of these numbers, how they're so big and how they grew so fast over the last two years. Um, and that's a lot of my own ignorance at building costs, but can you help me understand that? So I can try to explain that.
Sure. So, so first of all, the idea with creating this budget is to, we are on the side of conservative. So these design budget numbers are based off of a typical, a di- designer is going to look for ten percent of what it's going to cost to construct that structure. So for example, um, and, and when I say ten percent, meaning they want that ten percent value to get them from notice to proceed to the end of the project. And then typically, they want to be paid out to a seventy five percent level by the time they're done with design and they're moving into bidding. So these three budget numbers, sixty thousand three seventy five, ten thousand three fifty, and then the concession at seventy three thousand three twelve. What I did was I took a recent estimate done on this project for a thousand seat capacity bleacher with the accessible path, a press box, and then replacing that concession building. I got each of those three values. Grab ten percent of them and then seventy five percent of that ten percent value, that's these three numbers. Is it possible that once we get a designer and we're doing designer nego- fee negotiations, that I can get somebody to agree to say nine percent or eight percent? Yeah, it's possible. But I, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't budget that way. So that's the, that's kind of the rhyme and reason behind these three numbers.
So, sorry, so that means like the end, the concession restroom would be seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars?
So is that? Well, it's ten percent. So is the thinking that the concession and the restroom building in total would be about a million dollars?
Say it again?
Um, is your estimate for the total cost of the concession restroom building around a million dollars? If you did a ten percent of the million, a million and then seventy five percent of that?
Yeah. So when you include demo of the existing and, and then utility work and then construction of the new, right around eight hundred K or so?
Okay.
All right. Okay. Beth?
Come back to me.
Okay, Mara?
This is, this is huge. Like, uh, it's almost overwhelming to just look at. Um, and you know, and I know that there are lots of people in our community who are looking at the bleachers that we have that we're renting and saying, what is wrong? Why can't we just buy ones that are like this? Um, instead of having to spend what's looking like, you know, two million for bleachers and concession and press box or more. So uh, I just I haven't, I guess I haven't been to here and maybe this hasn't been brought up. I don't know, but what why are we, why are we going through this? Um, this seems like a huge project when we seem to be doing okay with what we've got, like right now. And, and what is the difference between the two? So why? What's the selling point for us to go this route? Um, other than, you know, maybe the accessibility? I don't know if that's, that's part of it. Um.
Mara, can I add to your question? Just to one of, I have something on the same lines. Uh, but so I, I looked separately, uh, you know, my own Google allows me and it looks like there's two different types of bleachers. There's the angled type of bleachers that have this design aspect to it. And there's also something that I, I, I read other places and I think I Vermont, uh, Springfield, Vermont, I think their school district had, it's called IU, their galvanized features, which um, less. So I think the question is, why does that work for some places and not for us? Um, they were significantly cheaper for five hundred thousand dollars. Um, it was, I think a hundred, a thousand person capacity, had a press box and all of these things. And I think that's what maybe ultimately would also like to see as well. It seems like we're pursuing the design. Um, which is more of the concrete, you know, concrete beast, but is there alternative that we have yet to fully explore and will we get different information? Or is there not a tendency to get that information? Is that? Is that more of one, was that when you're kind of like the galvanized one? How do, how do we, how do we make sure that we're not proceeding with the most expensive option here? I think that's the, the worry about committing funds. Um, where we don't feel, I, I mean, um, we've gotten, invented out all other options yet that are least expensive. Have, like, do you have any other projects that you can, you know, that you've done, that you can comparatively provide to us about what the uh, what bleachers are done in, you know, recently or other, other school communities or what are the options that might help? What bleachers are done in, you know, recently or other other school communities, or what are the options that might help school creating every. In form of what we're looking at as a finished product versus. You know, right now, there's a, uh, mystery.
Sure, I mean, so I don't have any, you know, past projects that went more affordable, but. Um, I, we can definitely research that and see if there's more affordable options. Ways to go. I, I was just gonna show on my screen. Can you guys see this change in screen? So. So this is one of the estimates received, um. And install prefab bleachers and press box, six hundred and twenty-five K. So it's, it's everything else, foundations, walkways, that kind of adds up. The bleacher scope to eight hundred and twenty grand. Um, you know, so just when you, when you do all these different scopes of work, next thing you know, everything just adds up, I. I'm not sure if you're gonna de- design this project to have an accessible path from Great Road. To a new set of bleachers that is structurally sound, um, set in the ground appropriately. Press box, building inspector approved, et cetera, et cetera. You're gonna do a bunch greater than eight hundred and twenty grand. But we can, we can look into it.
I just say right now, that is a hell of a better number than two point five million that has been proposed to us already, so that.
Yes, so let's just, yeah, I don't wanna confuse things though, so two point five million, that's what that was presented to you guys, and I, I didn't do it, but. That include hard costs and soft costs, right? So, so you're just looking at hard costs, right? So this is construction cost relative to replacing the existing home side bleachers and and. Uh, press box with new. And and then you got some costs associated with that evading and demoing existing concession building and replacing with new. There's another eight hundred grand. And then you got, um, some designer, um, items, et cetera, et cetera. You got, you got soft costs and relative to contingency change order stuff you got a budget for. And that adds, so this, this is an estimate showing call it two point two million. But that's, that's when that all adds up to greater than two million, when you add the soft costs.
Okay, so I would just, as an example, if you doesn't take away, just because I know that this is something that the community will ask of us, and we need to be able to explain any of our decisions as it relates to why we're proceeding with certain funding. Um, if you're able to look at, yeah, I Springfield, Vermont, they have Riverside Middle School has bleachers, they just opened up. And they're gonna be this fall. And and they are for a thousand-person capacity, they approved funding in the spring of last year, and they had them already prepared for fall. Um, use, they have a. Drone use, so I look at maybe see, that's the only, that's what the public is seeing, and so the layperson. We would wanna understand why would people like that work for me, and that's what I would, I guess, ask for you to help us with informing. Um, ourselves, so we can then inform the public. As well, and in those, those, because those are the questions we're getting, and I, I'm no bleacher expert. Um, but I know two point five, when I look at the soft costs, the soft costs are exceeding the hard costs, that's crazy to me. Um, but it also looking like it's, you know, it's including demolition of the the shaft and a lot of the other things, so. Like demolition.
So. So soft. So I think the question is, what are soft costs? The soft costs are design team, O P M, and contingencies on a project like this. As well as, you know, when I said geotech engineering, that'll, that's kind of soft costs, hazmat sampling, that's soft costs. So everything that's not actual construction work, that's all soft costs. So the. The overall breakdown here is you got, I don't know, call it one point six million in hard costs. And and call it five hundred and sixty K in soft costs. Between this one thirty and this four thirty-seven five.
Is this a document, maybe you know this, which is something that we can. At least get circulated to us, so this is for that, or?
This was researched the athletic director did just to get a general understanding.
I know we've seen a lot of different documents, but if you're able to just recirculate it, we we had gotten it, and, um, my apologies if so, that would be great to, uh, to have in the school committee. Um. It's very good.
Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, I didn't want to, yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, and the previous one was held in nineteen seventy-two, which I think was pretty much where it went after, too, so I'd like to know what the longevity of this is projected to be.
Well, exactly, we don't know, so this is what, uh, don't know, don't know. Yet, prefab bleachers. It's not foreign. Would we not have the pills, soft costs, like if we needed a designer, if it was. Back, it's there, they. Look to fail to understand what that involves, um, you know, if it's a different type of bleacher and, you know, what is the difference? What is the longevity of the, the long term, um? You know, for that. I, I, I think those are all, maybe we should have questions, so just like we're gonna turn them, you all wanna kind of give your questions to send them to me? And then I can be voted to run. Um, Phil, and just, so you probably have some homework coming your way, um, that just helps us. With this process a little bit, I think. We all wanna make sure that we're confident in our decision and voting, especially if we're gonna have to commit money next month. And, um, and just we, you know, we have responsibility to taxpayers, so.
They asked me.
Yes, um, any other, Hillary, have another question?
Yeah, so the bleachers task force, what involvement have they had in this? Like, is this the plan? Have they invented different options, like prefab bleachers and the IU bleachers and? This type of design and decided that this is what is best, or were they not involved at this stage where all that could be a basis? We're sort of.
That's a good question, like, then, and to add, and I'm seeing if you've been reading, like. It will, yes, really starts to drive the process that the. Like you, the top said, no, this is a this table are feature experts, so he just starts off like.
Correct.
Things we've asked, so we've really been paid, and this is really helpful, now we have. Documentation, I think this is what, you know, our, the soft cost, the design cost, what is it really? These, like, now started to come together, and I don't think the committee came about itself, like, oh, we could. Be bad features, we could have to have. Some other, I, I think it really was a matter of finding what. It's the site and those starts to follow for that design to go.
But I'm wondering if, um. You know, Phil is the design expert and the. The building expert. I think we also need some of the people who use the bleachers and are more involved with that, because I didn't know there was a press block until two years ago. Uh, so I'm, we also want to get some of. The task force folks to see if they have questions based on this in reference. Uh.
You didn't believe any, but.
All right, so I might just have like, uh, when I remember. But I, Thomas, that is, I'm the. Turf.
That's really like.
Yes, so I know there is. That hard, so you learn. Yeah, so I'm, but I know, I think, I know Thomas, that can be, and he's been on it, so I wonder if we can. Insurance is like, uh, there, you know, the.
All that's on the night, with Thomas, like, on there, there's so many.
I think we wanna just make sure that that recognition has come through. Um, and then, yeah, that, that.
Maybe just somebody.
I think it's just important to get, make sure we have all stakeholders who are reviewing this, that we can play. Remember what we made a decision in November, um, because it does feel like. Yeah, it does feel a little rushed, I'm pretty sure, but Phil, I do appreciate you putting a timeline and some, you know, expectations and deliverables for us to. Um, to take away and putting this together, and I think we were kind of. At some point, it was just like, you know, throwing jello against the wall, so it would stop for a while, so this has been helpful first, um, you know, getting us. And kind of narrowing our scope of, you know, how we're gonna think about things, so I appreciate it. Uh, is anyone else?
Comments to you later.
Okay, all right, so, um, wonderful, congratulations. And, um, thank you very much, and so we will, um, send, I'll kind of get that from the school committee and and send that over to, to Brian. And then Brian, your takeaway is to just engage with, uh, Mike and the, the bleacher. We need to see how they can also take information that goes by the school committee. And if they have a recommendation or or questions, then, um. And then we will have a, we'll have to add this down into the meeting in November. Is there particular, it has to be done by a particular day of November? I just don't, I don't know if it's on the timeline, maybe. Or is it?
Yeah, early November would be ideal.
Early November, okay, so earlier.
I don't think it would be okay. So it's imperative that it would be, it's the way we have enough students for that.
Okay, all right, so our two meetings are November seventh and November sixteenth. Okay, uh, yeah, I don't think this, that it is gonna work unless there's a future date for that, so this will be. We'll find out, oh, all right, so we have some homework, uh, Phil, thank you very much, and, um, and then if you have any other questions, I'm sure. You know, check your inbox the next couple of days, okay?
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, moving on, superintendent benchmarks.
So we are forty-five minutes.
Yeah, I'll, um.
Okay, so we had a meeting, um, here, maybe about this last. Um, we gave some, we talked about some, however, just behave, some haven't made, just some of our topics, everything. Um, so we're gonna arrange a meeting, um, and make sure it follows up as expected, or we do. Like this.
Oh, we have to.
So we can go, we can go, but if these are not, these are.
Again, that, we, you know, I, I, at this point, I think, no, because the last voting at this meeting, like, but again. Okay, I don't know, didn't have time to, they were sent out today. So, um. Uh, Mary, what would you, are you comfortable voting today? Would you?
Yeah, we can vote with additional edits that wouldn't.
That, can you?
I would like to take this.
With those edits on in particular, I know that you put some feedback on here, you can, should just start with that a little bit, just to.
Um, there's just, there are some things that are not correct, some. Um, a bit for example, like the, um, some of the stuff, you know, and what being, I do the data, some of it's about what the decision is for. Um, so those are the benchmarks, like what are these, what are we going to be presented with, um, at what points? What was that for that presentation? Though those things matter, that that is where we're monitoring the progress and that I'm very confident that it will be. Adjusted based on what we've been doing so far. Um, so that's clear here, the thing that's, we have those. Um, D P I, to make sure that, you know, that it's recorded, that it's not just the, yeah, video that's within our relations, it's also the school committee, so maybe. That is what you can. When they just be. Facts that. Considered. Um, so, so things like that, and then, um. You think there are things that put in that are hearing impact that are good, but they're not affecting any goals. And the benchmarks themselves, and that's something that we talk of records to, so just, so things like be accurate, making sure that we're doing, so. Um, and making sure our petitions are something, and then making sure that the right chain of cleanness and is happening for these just.
Um. Just finding a path forward. Here. Uh. Just based on the feedback particular, uh, I know there's been a lot of work. On into that, and I, I, I hear in that there's still some areas that. A focus, um, that it's basically.
It's basically that, and talk about it, my read, but it's not. But not, if not, though, I don't think it's meaningful, I don't think we are in shape.
Okay.
That is just, which is.
Just working at those costs. Jump out and. Yeah. With the challenge of.
Just.
So. What if we proceed with voting with the understanding that. Areas indicating that, uh, I'll, I'll call those particular ones out. That will, um. More fine tune. And within the strategic plan. And, uh. So. And then come back to the school committee on whatever those particular. Changes are, it looks like, for the most part, ninety percent of it's. Okay, but then there's a couple that are still wanting to be.
Because once I saw that it was not, and I know I have enough paper, and so.
Yeah, so what I have to be next week, but it's, it's more just to better define, it's more for everybody's sake, but for Brian's sake, we go to evaluate. Like, what is the purpose? What is the end result of each one of these versus just? Language up there, so those are the things that we were talking about, what we're gonna need next week, and then. Have it, so I'd be okay with, with approving this, just knowing that we're gonna amend it, even the next, the next time, just to be more specific, that's all we're trying to.
So this is under usually substantive, it's just making them more specific and.
And making sure that they're realistic. To what we're asking.
So it's feeling kind of. Yes, they, no, they are, I should. Okay. I mean, I'm not saying anything, I'm not reading it, somebody was about, but. What's the, what's all the chatter about voting on the stage, they're not completing their significant things, changing. Is that what they're not, they're, they're not just more, they're more specific, they're not significant in the sense of what action, they're just getting more, so that's what I. If we can finish this, we're hoping not in, in, in finalizing, I'm just trying to balance, you know, what we said we could do, and, you know. We started this in August, and here we are.
The team is wearing. That's a rationale, I know.
I'm not saying, I think there's, I think there's an effort, that it's really a disconnect, right? There was an effort to make some changes. And, no, there, for whatever reason, I'm not, I wasn't part of that meeting, so I can't really say, I'm just trying to find a path forward for us. That is reasonable for everyone, and I, I think what it sounds like is school committee, but like, I don't know, Mark, uh, thoughts on. I only try to.
So I'm saying, I'm okay with approving. With these, with these edits and, um, but we can always add it back, right, and that, and that there are. Or tweaks. additions.
Okay. And I'm just looking, so. I'm looking at the, the feedback and you mentioned that they're not exhaustive, that, and I don't really know what's that, so I wanna recognize this is not. Uh, like, just the one that you have. Um. It doesn't sound like you're objecting to the benchmarks, it's just more playing out the benchmarks, right, to be more specific.
If you're saying. Then the annual definition should be. That it is showing us more within, showing us what we're doing to doing that, than showing us more direct steps. So I sort of, sort of like, making sure. So, making sure that when we're talking about the E P I, or we're not just, if all, all of work is not in the E F P I that is from the public, it is also from the school. Um, so that. Right, so it's things like that, also whether there's a burden that I've already done. And is using that, that is not for the benchmarks, so it shouldn't be that. So that is, um, just.
Do anything sound familiar to the conversation, uh? You know, I'm just trying to figure out where to put it down, is so we're not revising this process again at the next meeting, you know, how do we make sure? School committees will get. How do we connect, make sure everything is, is written to be voted, you know, I just feel like. Kind of in a, I don't know, I don't know people how to get us help, so I'm, I'm hoping there's suggestions on, like, how do we, how do we move forward here and not have this, you know? Still not good, still not done, you know, that's what I'm struggling. Okay. Um. This, okay. Okay, okay, so maybe, maybe that's just, maybe we don't.
I will.
Sure.
Oh, there's like nine.
Yes, yes, maybe we all have to write one. Okay.
About, okay, okay.
Okay. Okay, so with that in mind. Oh, and we don't have the right version. Um, I don't. Are we okay with just delaying the both?
I mean, you're working on these things anyway, Brian, so it's.
Right.
And then you know, like, very interesting, it's actually something Brian up.
Well, I think in a, in a sense that, you know, it starts with him, and then it goes down to his team, that's what it, that's what goes. So that, the action stuff is not all just him, he has to, for me, with. So you're a team. And everybody's, you know. They don't know, because he hasn't given them to all.
But he's working.
I think I should.
Goals are big, sure, the benchmarks, yeah, that's, but has to have expectations, so I just wanna. I'm just saying that they don't care what it is.
We, we, we know that, because they replied to the equity law that took place.
But you didn't do.
They went to my team's there.
Okay, so we will uh keep this. We're voting in the next meeting, I would say. Okay. Okay, and.
Spin on. Spin a little.
Great, okay, we'll look next time, and then, Zach, so you, and from you, and like, look at the one that you sent out, and uh if there's anything. It will bring up to, but you're falling out of that. What needs, and then you guys are on the next week, right?
Well.
Well, yeah, okay, so then you can look at that one, just make sure that's the the final, final, final one. Um, for us, that'd be. Okay. Okay, moving on, um, anything else on that? Great, um. We are going to then random agreement with the M E A for their stipends, I know that uh. We have a final. Version that have been provided, uh and so I'm just going to. Read what was um. What this is, this basically pertaining, it's codifying to the public, it's codifying state, uh teachers already get into the the contract. Uh, but because of the way, because they're not, because they're not codified, it affects their ability to have attention. Uh, or claim the permission, then something along this line, so um we are to correct that, and some of this was. Probably after, maybe should have been done before our last contract agreement, so um when. Um, additional piece or language that was added was that it is understood that this is not a precedent setting agreement, then any. Just like in addition to the contract shall be made. Uh, shall only be during the whole contract negotiations, that was what has been added, and everyone else had previously discussed this, and that, so um. I think, uh, I'll go ahead and motion at this point, that I think. I'll make motion that the school committee approve, and um. In that, I guess. And we have proof, they have not.
You have signed it.
Yeah, they were on it.
They have not signed it.
They have not, okay, so pending, okay, ratification. School committee need um need to approve, they don't understand, uh as great. Yeah, uh. So what is good? So we thought they didn't spell. When this was that? September first. Yeah, uh, which is, which includes a record that just come first, one, two. Second.
My only question was the wording of the management labor team committee of the community. Um, and that'll be used that term before.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
So that's a pre-meets.
Okay, well, okay. And that's just to clarify, that's aside, right, the no impact, because she, yes, a subcommittee of. But the negotiation, so it's like an extension, like, like kind of a table to figure out sort of, because like the next.
But you think the reasonable contrast, it's been really active, and then you make a site, you want to change. Want to take this special job to do about evaluation process, you know, that's something. That, like, we're not adding to things with the evaluation. It says you're a subject of the public school.
Yeah, that's the part that was thrown out, especially the committee of the school committee. Well, it's the negotiations, it is, actually, so it's, it's just.
I understand you meant it.
Right, right, we all, I see them in the negotiation, and then, and then.
So that, and then, yeah, another name exists naturally.
Oh, any other questions? Okay, um, on paper? Great. Okay, um, I'm just, yes. Someone's thinking that, maybe. Maybe. Okay. Share record, uh. My meeting wasn't able to happen this week, as it's something, so. I attended the FinCom public hearing, and there was a lot of good conversation about. Something that, that you chat or was, I think that. Was a major focus, so that everything is fine, um, so I'm meeting, I didn't look it up for some materials that I probably. That we've heard in discussion, so they are. They approved policies that. Able process, they were. Uh, the school is, they're both, uh, you know, to. Have folks do that, and they approved their own contract for. Which was, you know, I think a point for us to. To look over and and thereby, uh, or just to, you know, it's a contract really sound, so. Um, C P A met with. Had a meeting Wednesday. But. Monty, that's loud, stay, and we also. Members. He's going to be joining, so that was great, and uh as I think I mentioned last time, there's just gonna have. A small sample, just to help, or just get nails for her parents, as a more forward basic, uh dropping kind of. Time, and there was a lot of good discussion, I think, uh, there is. Some changes with uh teachers, discussion about how that model is or is not working, maybe suggestions into that, maybe read that uh. The teacher was discussing, or that's how it was projected at the time, uh. What is working, expectations of what that team chair role is, and how C P A will be uh provide that. Feedback as a power of impacts parents, you know, that they am pleased with that, to make sure that this, that. Is understood, and uh. I think it's. Um, Monday. A piece of holiday, so.
Right.
Um. And I'll go over, I was about to connect.
Um, we had our, you guys, the committee meeting, we set our goals, um, and same for our starting to be, so. You know, that we're supposed to do, so, yeah, two bill setting meetings last week, and, yeah.
Oh, and I forgot to mention, I have, Phil, maybe here that I will be sitting, I can leave those dates, so. To happen, part of the design, but a couple, just for the interviews for this design, so, yeah. For the whoever, whoever, like, like the leader next week, so. Who knows that.
Do we know, uh, folks, to take a look at the old, that was. Point, which I'm just curious, yeah.
I can buy that.
Yeah, okay, there is many gimmicky.
Uh, okay, uh, Mary?
Um, yes, so I wanted to, a shout out, I should have done it while the high school was here, because Brian put it in his uh. Superintendent's notes that will go up to the community anyway tomorrow, that, I mean, high school um learned from college, uh college board has awarded our. Program the silver status for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. So that's, and it was very close to the gold standard, so that was, that's very, another, you know, very impressive thing that. Our school system is doing, so I just wanted to um do that shout out, and um. Let's see, um, Tuesday, other than Christmas, or any of the holidays, Tuesday is a very important day. Um, needless to say, with the uh, I think with the town meeting and Green Meadow Elementary School vote, it has to pass by two-thirds. Majority in order to then go to the that box in November, that, so I'm hopeful that we're gonna get um. New turnout of of people, um, there, the barn, there's gonna be a presentation um done by the school building committee, and then uh. I'll obviously ample opportunity for people to ask questions at, so that's that, and we do have a meeting sitting, which is also great, um. We've got high school, National Honor Society students, as well as National Society students from uh Falla. And um at least one, one adult from the elementary school. Um, Maynard Fest was phenomenal, uh, you know, I'll speak, it was just really great to see um the schools represented, we had. Rob, we went from the elementary school, we had um, Kenny, our new principal from the middle school, Chuck was there, um, we had. Uh, Holga was there for the high school, there was a great, great, great table, a lot of people came up. Um, to ask questions, and then on the left side was the Green Meadow Building Committee, and on the right side was the Native Education module team, so really. And it was, it was just, it was a really good turnout, we'll share, I think, because it wasn't great weather, but it wasn't raining, so um, it's really. It was pretty cool, so just a shout out to everybody that. That helped with that, and I also just wanted to do a shout out to people on the Green Meadow um elementary building committee, they have been doing a lot of outreach with me. Um, and it came, you know, I'm gonna forget somebody, uh, but Max Anderson, Jennifer, uh, Badet, um, Josh Morse has been phenomenal, um.
Okay.
Um, Anthony, the day, the day, thank you very much, um, Mike Stevens was just there at a coffee with me on Sunday. Um, so just people working really, really hard to um to get the word out, and, you know, with the the library, and different, um.
Really, that's, that's huge, that's like.
Great, the farmers market, we went everywhere, so, but uh, huge, huge, huge um. Help in in order to get the word out, so really just want to have to a shout out to everybody. And um, and then the only other thing, um, yet, I went to my first safety meeting, um, safety committee meetings the other day, I was amazed. People were there, which is really great, a lot of good discussion, talked about goals and things like that this year, so.
Um, so, a little bit of that, yeah, I, policies, actually. My other question was about our. Twenty-six, I think, is what it sounded like, uh. Yeah, it worked very well, and I think we're just saying like after sixteen, or it's what. We were promoted by, okay, so we'll get that. Look at that schedule, send off location, yeah, yeah, do that. Uh, see. Uh, I was wondering what happened to the reception was for the data talk. You know, we, you know, shout out tonight, but. Some numbers here. Numbers and like, what reception, what school, and. Great. Other thing was, um, I know I said to, you know, but. Concerning the fields. Um, Brian, if you would please maybe chat with some other schools. That great field, like. Drew mentioned, um, the bottom field, just talked to the super here, asked like. What is, what is it, what is that, like, what do they do to, like, make sure that everybody's able to play from their field, and. And that it still looks good, um, you know, you were, you were saying, if you talk surrounding towns. Um, when it comes to like, maybe something about, you know, some, or school or snow, that kind of stuff, I just think that it'd be. Our, you know, since we're seem to struggle with that, it might be good to just put it out there and ask other. School systems, what, what they're doing, how they, you know, we're all strapped for you, but. Maybe, there's gotta be something, so, I'll be there, uh. Let's see, uh, this past week, we had. We did Spanish exchange students, uh, which was fantastic, there were tons of things that we did. Um, all the, um, I dropped some, a number of them off. We had a caravan, dropped them off this morning at. Five in the morning, um. To South Station, America, to York City, to home. And it was so much fun to watch all the kids, you know, speaking Spanish, and, you know. Getting to know each other, you know, it was so great, really, I'm looking forward to when all of our kids go out there. In February. Um, one thing I wanted to actually just better is the town meeting. And we have a real, actually, so mine, gonna be a popular article, that's me presenting, is that where everyone's okay with the drawing? We just have the H V article, okay, all right, uh, I just wanted to, we haven't officially agreed on that, just to make sure that that was what the plan is, okay, and it is just the article, we didn't put anything else. For that, so, um, oh, and and along those lines, uh. The, the school committee has been intermittently invited to a, a joint. Community for topics, and so it, I I reached out to to Dan and Brad. And say, hey, please have this school vision, or as a student, attending, and especially we have our own arms, it seems about her, probably important, that we are a part of these discussions as well. So that will sound that it would be. Okay. Um. We can all, our agenda, we have one set of minutes. And those minutes are for May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. So. Looks like there was just some dramatical. Uh. Updates were there, so. I will wish that, um, we approve the minutes from May twenty-fourth, like every, new edits provided. Okay, all in favor? Okay, those are carries, great, and then, uh, oh, we did send. The warrant of twenty-four, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, fourteen, okay, and so without objection, I will, we accept the warrants for. Twenty-four, fourteen, or fifteen, and twenty-four, sixteen. Right, no objection, so accepted, and I will. Okay, all in favor? All right, we're adjourned at nine twenty-nine.